Good morning, I'd like to call to our Board of Supervisors meeting on Tuesday, March 10th, don't call please.
Supervisor Carol?
Here.
Supervisor Elias?
Here.
Supervisor Miller?
Here.
Supervisor Meladis?
Present.
Chair Bronson?
Here.
Let the record show all members are present.
Pastor from this today? Okay Pastor Josh Alkenbach, think for you in this church?
No.
Okay in that case let's rise for the purposes of the now of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Madam Chair. Please. I'd like to ask my own personal privilege. On Friday Chester Bagwell passed away and that was Keith Bagwell's dad, he was my chief executive assistant. He was a good man, lived to be 95 years old, moved to Phoenix in 1951, was married for 62 years and had a wonderful life, worked hard in manufacturing and security and other work up there in Phoenix. He lived pretty much all his life after the 1951 move. But he was also an MP in WWII and had a great career in the military as well. We mourn his passing and that's just what I wanted to let everybody know here who works with Keith because he's a good man, tries very hard to serve this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Valadis.
Point of person Povich, I wanted to congratulate you as the 2015 Inside Tucson Business Women of Influence First Place winner under public service and I want to make note of it and offer my congratulations.
Thank you. Supervisor Carol?
Congratulations Chair Bronson, it's a great honor indeed, best wishes.
Thank you.
And with that, let's move to pause for pause. We let's meet Truman, Officer Parker, you want to introduce us to Truman?
Good morning, this is Truman. Truman is about a two-year-old lab pit or what we affectionately refer to as a Sonoran purebred. He is just the calmest dog, I mean for two years old, he loves being out, but you take him out for a walk and you stop and he sits down and waits for you to move on to the next. Today I was finishing up my paperwork, he sat down underneath my desk while I get all my emails and he's just, he's just an all-around great dog. He walks on a loose lead, we'll get over here to this side, but when I say on a loose lead, this is what I mean, he's not pulling, he's not tugging, he's just along enjoying time out of the kennels. He came to us back in the middle of February when he was picked up as a stray and amazingly no one came looking for him. And, sorry, to me that's just sad. Somebody had obviously spent time with him, he's trained, he doesn't jump up, you know, but he's just hanging out waiting for the next phase of his life to begin. And now with our March special and all adoption fees are waived, he can go home to a new home for just the cost of his license and that's one heck of a deal.
He's got a lovely, I mean he's got a beautiful coat, beautiful color.
He does and if, I don't know if you'd be able to see, but he's got these wonderful golden eyes.
He does.
And it's just, if you could turn around here so more people see. But he's just a great dog, I mean there's, there's nothing specific you can point to, he's just an all-around phenomenal dog. Thank you.
Thank you Officer.
He said wait, I'm not done.
You're not done making, making eyes. He should be in motion pictures, you get that kind of dog. Okay, let's move on to presentations and proclamations and Supervisor Elias, I mean, yeah Supervisor Elias, given my voice, I'm going to ask you to make the presentation and I will notify presentation of a proclamation to Annie Sykes and Lucinda Hughes, one of the Pima County Tucson Women's Commission proclaiming the day of Friday, March 13th, 2015 to be Women in Government Day. Look, there's a motion in a second, any objections hearing on motion carries? Is, are any or Lucinda here? Nobody's here, okay, well then you don't have to make the presentation. There were no objections, so motion carried and Women in Government Day is Friday, March 13th and I'll make the presentation then when I attend the event. Okay, we now move on to call to the public and again may I remind you, you've got three minutes, please abide by the rules of civility and announce your name when you come to the podium. Ken Scoville?
Good morning Madam Chair, Supervisor, my name is Ken Scoville, guess I gotta give a quick. I'm sort of here today to provide some information and also to get some things into the record. Fifty years ago this May, the grand homes in which, in what were called, what was called Snob Hollow began to be demolished by the city of Tucson through the mandate of urban renovation private speculators. The Frederick Kramer Mansion and later Potter Place, which has been owned for decades by the Arizona Inn, is being sold to a local home builder and will be demolished this spring. This home is of the same quality as the hollow homes with stone foundation, thick masonry walls and porcelain roof tiles, very unique. A half century later, the continued demolition by neglect as well as land speculation and then replaced the irreplaceable with frame-stucco construction. I was quoted in the Arizona Daily Star article published in the business section on March first concerning the mansion with my usual plea for adaptive reuse and preservation. The home builder was quoted by saying that it did make economic sense. I discovered the most dramatic facts about this whole issue after the publication of this story. The Arizona Inn requested and received several proposals last fall for the mansion and its three acres of ground and thick mature vegetation. The Inn rejected a seven-figure purchase price for the land of the mansion with the proposal to save the Kramer Mansion and convert to two residences and build eight additional homes that would honor the casting style of the mansion. Preservation architect Bob Vint was the one doing the assessment of the Kramer property for this developer and was quoted in the Tucson Weekly, March 5th, the online version under the range section, that the mansion is a solid building that can be saved and that this proposal was rejected by the Inn. Then contacted by the Weekly, Mr. Conroy from the Inn said that there was never any proposal with these specifics. Needless to say, I'm very concerned about this whole issue and like lots of things in Tucson or any community and being involved in historic research for 30 years, there's always seems to be multiple stories to something and I'm concerned, I'm still trying to get another article in the Star, but I'm concerned that this message, get out there and get in the public record, that the house, the mansion could be saved and there was a seven-figure proposal that the Arizona Inn rejected. So I'm just still trying to figure the context and the situation for that and I'm also putting this in the record so if somebody like me 50 years from now is trying to figure what's going on in Tucson and hopefully they're not here making a plea 50 years from now to save a building. And in just in closing, I also want to add my support to the apple fountains and landscape and that, that landscape really connects both historic neighborhoods and I'm a real advocate for that also. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Reggie West?
My name's Reggie West, I'm Vice President of Pima Paving in Tucson, we've been in business since 1978, here locally owned and family-owned business. And my concern is that we're talking today about the Homer Davis, not Homer Davis, Homer Davis is one I want to mention, but the Northside Community Park Improvement Project that's being recommended for award by Durazo Construction. And the concern is that in the past, I've talked to Mr. Huckleberry's office, I've talked to the Transportation Director's office and the Procurement Department about a contractor who will remain unnamed right now, but you'll know who it is, Homer Davis, La Canada, McGee Projects. I had ongoing concerns about things that were going on there, they were, they were fueling trucks at illegal diesel pumps, that was something I talked to Mr. Huckleberry's office about. There were other situations that were going on, I knew they were not paying their prevailing wages on La Canada, that was talked about, the fact that they weren't paying their contractors, their subcontractors and to me that's criminal, that's, that's, when, when the county knows these things and pays the bills to them and know that they're not paying their bills, then you become involved in that. And now we have another concern and Durazo is not a bad company, but when we look at the situation with them and their pricing, I'm concerned because it's another case of low pricing and either, and I don't know how to say this and be nice, but I'll be as civil as I can, but if you have an engineering department, I don't know who really takes care of the engineering department for you here, but if they give an estimate for this Northside Community Park of $2.9 million and then a bid comes in for $662,000 under and your engineering department and procurement department says, oh yeah, that's a good price, well either the engineering department should just go away because there's no sense having them waste their time estimating something if they're that bad at estimating. Because if it can be done for $2.238 million, then something's wrong and we're going to end up with another McGee job where we've got projects that can't be done. You look at the, you look at the pricing and what happens is, when I see this, and I do this for a living, I've been in the construction field ever since I was in junior high, so since 1970 I've been in the construction business, I think I know what I'm doing. So what I look at is I see these pricings and when you look at the group of pricings for all these general contractors who aren't in the civil engineering business, they are way low and we are, and I'll just quit, sorry. I would just like to say that it's, it's nice to have the time to spend and if somebody wants to, they're more than happy to talk to me and I can show them some actual numbers if you'd like.
And you've been in contact with Mr. Huckleberry's office?
That was in the past and I've been in contact regularly now with Allen Miller's office.
Okay.
And I have some documents I've given there.
Make sure that Mr. Huckleberry's office gets those documents.
Okay, thank you.
Jerry Otoboni?
Madam Chairman and Board of Supervisors, my name's Jerry Otoboni and I live in Ora Valley. And again, last week a group for the symphony came begging for money and asking you to push Chuck Huckleberry's $640 million bond. I was informed the building for the symphony was poorly built and has always had horrible acoustics. A friend of mine just attended the musical program at the University of Arizona's Crowder Hall, it's a state-of-the-art facility. The people of the symphony think that the taxpayers should live together to pay taxes for this bond, so it only seems fair that the symphony should rent the University of Arizona's Crowder Hall for the programs or even Centennial Hall. I thought it was interesting when a woman from the symphony pushing the overpriced $640 million bond made a comparison with Oklahoma City and I thought it was odd because in all the years that I have driven around Tucson, I have yet to see oil bubbling up from the ground. So the sixth poorest city with the worst, fifth worst roads in the county, or in the country really, is compared with the 37th wealthiest city in the country. A sister city would probably be Detroit, so businesses are leaving because they're tired of being overtaxed by Mr. Huckleberry. A member of the symphony stated that he had letters or sent letters and emails to 12,000 of his patrons asking them to push this $640 million bond. The money would be better spent if they could be creative and put the money into a fund to do what they need to do, rather than taking food out of the mouths of our children and on the backs of our taxpayers who are struggling and don't even attend the symphony. Four of you spoke in favor of the bond, of the symphony of course. Then Mr. Land stands up and wants the seniors, families and children to starve by eating peanut butter sandwiches to fund his pet projects. And according to the Daily Star, Mr. Huckleberry said that he wants to tax us again and the baseball players want to eliminate our already club basketball, baseball teams because they want to privately have their own thing. And then also to the program on Mr. Buckminster Show, a caller called them to ask how they could get rid of Mr. Huckleberry and our hardly paid Mr. Huckleberry who makes $320,000 plus benefits, his response was the only way to remove our, our taxing this many administrator was to remove the four of you who voted for Mr. Huckleberry. So perhaps what we need to do is, is go ahead and get some new people, new supervisors who will hire a administrator who will put in his means and not be taxing the spending all the time and help the taxpayer and that's what's needed. Thank you.
Brett Derratt?
Good morning Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm Brett Derratt, I work for Visit Tucson, I'm just here to respectfully request that you consider putting on the November 2015 ballot, the bond package that's being developed by the Pima County Bond Advisory Committee. There's really three primary ways to grow a region's visitor industry, investing in destination sales and marketing, which you certainly do through us at Visit Tucson, looking at growing existing events and creating new events that attract visitors and then certainly looking at investing in tourism-related capital projects. The bond package that's being considered has 12 projects right now under the museums and tourism category valued at approximately $105 million. There's also an additional, I would say about $150 million or so in projects that would certainly benefit us, in some cases directly, in other cases indirectly as well. You know, I can assure you that we at Visit Tucson would certainly advocate for the passage of a bond package with our 500 member businesses and other constituents as well. And certainly as we take a look at this, you know, great places to live are great places to visit. I really believe that this bond package contains some outstanding projects that would certainly enhance the quality of life here for all of us, but that would also benefit the tourism industry. I thank you for your support, tourism's a $2.1 billion industry, we certainly see an opportunity to be able to grow that. Thank you for your investment and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Tom McGovern?
Good morning Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Tom McGovern and first of all, let me thank you for at your last meeting approving the Hughes Access Road Relocation Project. I think this is an important first step in establishing a corridor in that area of the county that will certainly have tremendous benefit from an economic development standpoint and help us solidify logistics area and, and transportation improvements that will set us up for many years into the future. I'd also like to encourage you to move forward with the bond proposal. We don't know exactly whether it'll be on it yet, but as long as it has a good mix of the job creation and economic development packages that we have seen so far included, I think I can assure you that there will be a lot of support certainly in the business sector for this bond program and we will do everything in our power to help make it go through. I think the Sonoran Corridor and the Ora Valley Accelerator Projects are a couple of really key items on that agenda as it stands today. I anticipate that those will continue through to you as recommendations and hope that you will see that their benefit is of such great magnitude to our entire community that voters should have an opportunity to, to be heard on them. Finally, I'd just like to make my pitch for infrastructure investment. It's really critical to our economic growth, there are debates about which comes first, the chicken or the egg, do we build it and they will come or when they come do we scramble to get it built? I'm obviously of the first camp, but I think we have to face the shameful failure of our federal and state representatives in taking care of transportation needs that are so critical in our community and that are holding us back as far as our economic growth goes. So it's up to us, we have numerous solutions available and we probably need all of them, but what we really need is leadership from, from the board and from the community together to make these things occur and to have them happen quickly. In the meantime, let's keep the pressure on our federal and state representatives to do the right thing and to play their part in this entire big picture. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jeff L.
Good morning Madam Chair and Board, I'm here representing the Tucson Young Professionals this morning, my name is Jeff L. The Tucson Young Professionals membership range is 20, ages 21 to 40 and we have about 2,000 members on our mailing list. Obviously two vital issues for our demographic, our job creation and with, with that goes infrastructure. We would also like to thank you, as Tom just mentioned, the investment in Hughes Access Road Relocation Project, supporting one of our largest employers. We have several members in our, within our organization that work for Raytheon and those are obviously nice, well-paying jobs that are important for, for our demographic and any investment in jobs in the community that create those high-paying quality jobs are crucial for, for the members of our age range and demographic. We would also like to support the mention of the potential bond and specifically a mix of economic development and job creation that would be good investments for the future of our region. Tom previously before me mentioned two of those, this Sonoran Corridor, which would eventually connect I-10 to I-19, which would improve flow of traffic between the communities of southern and eastern portion of our county and provide connection for products from Mexico to the port of Tucson and one potential multimodal logistic hub in the state of the vicinity of Tucson International Airport. Also the Ora Valley Accelerator Project sets the region up for a potential biotech valley, leverages our current expertise in development in a field occurring at Rocha Tana and Sanofi, again two employers that we have several members that work for both of those organizations and creates an environment for potential job, job growth in a high-tech and well-paying industry. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Larry Stewart?
Good morning, my name's Larry Stewart, I'd like to talk to you about the park on the corner of Sherbel and Trico Road, it's in Sharon, it's in your district.
And that's the one by the fire station?
Pardon?
The one by the fire station?
Yes, it's one by the fire station.
Okay, thank you.
So years back, the community got together, the people out there, built some bonds and put some equipment into, playground equipment into park there and with donations from the taxpayers out there. Well, this equipment was removed a month or two ago because the, they said it was in, in, wasn't being fixed up. Well, when we put the, put the equipment in, the agreement was that Pima County Parks and Rec would, would, would own that equipment, even though we bought it, it was, whatever. Well, that's the way it worked. So suddenly I went to the Fire District Board and they said, because we had set it up, I was on the Board of Directors of the Fire District at the time and we had stipulation in our, in our insurance company, our insurance policy, excuse me, was I believe a $7 million umbrella to cover the park and whatever else. Well, they said that the insurance company wouldn't cover it, so they had to remove the equipment and they had spoken, I guess to your office and Pima County Parks and Rec about upgrading, returning the equipment basically. And then they were told that there wasn't any funds for it. So they removed the equipment and I was...
So they, they, who is they removed?
Pardon?
Who removed the equipment?
The Fire Department.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
We have very little out there in that particular area and I'd like to see that park be taken over by Pima County Parks and Rec and so we have a facility that we can, the kids out there can use. There's very little that the taxpayers get back to the tax owner and then to take away what little that we did have, I don't feel is right. Thank you.
Thank you, just make sure you contact your, our office and we'll meet with you and see where we can go, how we can move forward.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Ken, just, just contact our office and set up an appointment so we can continue to discuss this, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Cecil Follinsby, am I pronouncing that correctly?
That's good, I'm Cecil.
Cecil.
Yeah, it's called Cecil.
Sorry.
Good morning.
Did I get the last name wrong?
Follinsby, very good.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning Madam Chair and Board, I'm Cecil Follinsby, I have been a resident of Tucson for about 14 and a half years, moved here in 2000. My background is in corporate, working for consumer industry, large corporations. My dedication moving to Tucson was to invest in the community through getting involved in the arts and so I've been on a fundraiser for various performing arts organizations including the University School of Music, a co-founder of the Desert Song Festival, which has been now completed its third year, currently a board member of TSO, the Symphony, as well as involved in the opera. So my experience in working for corporate, in a corporate America was that for any community to be vital, it needed to have a balance of of course business, human services, infrastructure and attractions for people to come here, for businesses to stay, tax incentives and all of that. And so I am here in support of the bond issue because I think it does have quite a balanced representation. Specifically, you know, the, the portion of the bond that speaks to the changes and updating of the music hall, the area outside, the Lear Ridge, it's not frosting on a cake. It, you know, that music hall serves a great number of schools as well as performing arts groups as well as any, you know, many parts of the city. So in order to continue that, that health of the community, Tucson has a great history of being a cultural center, so I'm here in support of the bond.
Thank you very much. Tanya Gaxiel?
Hi, Madam Chair, Supervisors, I'm Tanya Gaxiel, I'm representing the University of Arizona and I'm here to ask you to advance the bond package, the one that's being considered, to advance it to the voters in order to help drive the economic development of the region. Projects such as the UVA Tech Park's proposed Innovation Building at the Bridges could really have a transformational impact on the economy of our region. The Tech Park at Rita Road already currently has an economic impact of more than $2 billion on the economy of the region and a project such as the Innovation Building could really jumpstart a similar facility at the Bridges. The proposed Innovation Building is a great example of a partnership between the county and the university and the proposed Science Park Drive Project proposes a similar partnership where both the county and the university bring resources and funds to bear on the project. So thank you so much for your attention and for your time and I do ask that when you have the opportunity to please advance the bond package to the voters in order to drive economic development. economic development.
Thank you. Paige Chancellor Marks.
Morning, Madam Chair and Councilmembers. My name is Paige Chancellor Marks. I've lived in Pima County since the mid-'70s. I'm the management attorney for Goldberg and Osborne for about 21 years now. I sit on the Reed Park Zoo Logical Society. I sit on the Ben's Bells Board. I'm the Capitol Campaign Chairman for Girl Scouts of Southern Arizona for the building that they're about to build. I'm very active in my church. I obviously see a lot of people and do a lot of things. I'm also married to Sheldon Marks, the owner of the International Center for Verbal Sex and Reversal. He brings in about 300 people to this city every year. They fly in from everywhere, they stay for about three days. No one really knows it exists, but over the years, he always goes, "God, should I move to another place?" Because I've got these women who are sitting around with nothing to do while their husbands are recuperating. Well, this is a great place for them. They have lots of attractions, they have lots of things they can do. And so I'm here for many purposes. I mean, I'm here to ask you to support the bond, obviously. But the reason why is because we've got a great county and a great city, and we've got a lot of stuff going on in it, but we need to continue to put money into those things so that those things continue to stay as great as they are, so that people want to come to our city, they want to move here, they want to be part of our community. I mean, I think that's all what it's about. And so the most important thing is that you all vote to put it on the ballot, so that the voters can decide whether they want to do it or not. I mean, you're going to hear from lots of people with different opinions, but the key is to get it on the ballot so that those people can decide. So please, I ask you to support it and put it on the ballot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tanya Miller.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Huckleberry. My name is Tanya Miller. I'm here today to speak to encourage you to call the November 2015 bond election. I am a member of the Board of Trustees for the Tucson Symphony Orchestra. I just want to let you know a few things that we've been doing. Our board has passed a motion in support of the bond election, and we formed our own venue task force in support of the same. As you might have gathered, we have and will continue to inform persons in the community about the bond and encourage them to vote yes, should it be brought to a vote or that made available to the public. And just to let you know, we have over 4,000 constituents here in Pima County that we have access to through our various lists. We pledge to continue to work with co-advocates to inform Pima County residents about the benefit and the scope of the bond, and we do note the concerns of those who are in opposition to the bond. We do work diligently to research the facts and circumstances that are raised by those persons and to inform members of our staff, our musicians, and other trustees within our board, so that when they do go out into the community, they can be informed of those concerns and also the facts to address those concerns. Thank you very much for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you, Tanya. Joshua and V O R, and then I can't read the rest. Okay.
Hello, Board. My name is Joshua Boardst. I'm the Education Outreach Manager at Arizona Opera, and I'm here to also voice my support for the bond specifically.
I can tell, listening to your voice, that you must be the opera.
Yes, I was trained as a tenor. But Arizona Opera is a company that started here in Tucson over 40 years ago, and with our unveiling of our Arizona World Campaign, are more committed than ever to presenting art and pieces that are relevant to Arizonans and to celebrating the culture and the populations that make this state so great. In the education department, we reach between 35,000 and 40,000 people in addition to our ticket buyers, 20,000 of whom are students who are either exposed to our touring shows that go actually out into the schools all around Southern Arizona, and connect the opera to their classroom learning, or by bringing them to the Tucson Music Hall to experience the community live event in-house. In fact, we had 1,500 students come to our Cruzada Parada de la Luna Dress rehearsal, which was the world's first mariachi opera. These were kids who were involved in the youth mariachi movement, kids from public schools, Title I schools, charter schools, private, all coming together to experience live opera for the first time in many cases. In addition to that, this season, we've announced and presented our first cultural festivals. This is the first time we've done something like this, and it's been overwhelmingly successful. We've had over 1,000 people come to our free events at the Leo Rich, at the Tucson Music Hall, Tucson Museum of Art, that really support and gather everyone to celebrate these pieces of art and celebrate our community. We found through our data that over a third, 37%, of our people who have attended these specific events have never attended any kind of opera event before and never even been to Tucson Music Hall, and are now 95% more likely and interested to regularly come to the symphony, come to the opera. That is an incredible number for an arts organization, especially in a place like Arizona, and we hope to continue that. And by providing the necessary refurbishments to Tucson Music Hall, we'll be able to do our work and bring the entire community together to celebrate the arts and everything that makes our county so great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Helen Erickson.
Good morning. I am Helen Erickson from TCC Today and the Tucson Historic Preservation Foundation. I would like to speak in support of the bond, including the downtown community theaters and historic cultural landscape. With the growing housing development downtown, a cultural and community center is essential, as is surrounding green space. The economic potential of both is enormous. One of the main criteria for business relocation is a vibrant cultural scene. The property values of businesses and housing increases in proportion to the adjacency of green space. We have at the Tucson Convention Community Center a landscape designed by one of the top three landscape architects of the 20th century. There is no way we could afford a design of this caliber today. The landscape has been determined to be eligible for the National Register of Historic Places. Grids of trees provide urban forest. Indoor-outdoor spaces offer a place to linger or lunch. Open spaces and the plaza provide opportunities for staging events such as Tucson Meet yourself. Grants are being explored to renovate the water sequence with today's water technology, a concept supported by the National Conference for Preservation Technology and Training and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. This semester, the University of Arizona in conjunction with the City of Tucson is focusing two classes on this resource. One class is documenting the condition of the plaza and developing as-built drawings of the site. The other is creating a base map for activating the space by pinpointing the needs of the 40-plus stakeholders who draw benefits from it. A community service group from Pima Community College is helping with the 3D computer drawings. After 43 years, shrubs die, trees age out, pavement shifts, electrical plumbing, and irrigation systems must be renovated. This is unquestionably worth it. It would be very short-sighted to ignore the economic and social potential of this landscape. This weekend, the Tucson Historic Preservation Foundation will be sending newsletters to 13,000 people in support of this bond. I encourage you to support it too. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Les Corey.
Madam Chair, members of the board, supervisors. My name is Les Corey. I've been a member of Pima County, a resident in Pima County for the last 20 years, and I'm an active volunteer in many organizations and serve on the boards of Western National Parks Association, Tucson Auto Bond Society, the Arizona Land and Water Trust. I also serve on the Pima County Conservation Acquisition Commission and have since its inception. I'm here today, obviously, I think, to actively support your decision to advance the 2015 bond election. I strongly urge you to delay no further and bring this comprehensive package of infrastructure, economic development, cultural, recreational, and conservation projects to the voters for their decision and action. This is not just a laundry list of bricks and mortar projects. This bond package reflects the hopes and dreams of thousands of Pima County residents who care deeply about the future economic and social vitality of this county and this community. The momentum for this bond has been building for several years. Certainly, about everything that can be said about the bond has been said, but it hasn't been said by everyone yet, I guess.
You're working on...
But I really, you know, if this is delayed further, it would only serve to frustrate, I think, all of these efforts and folks who have worked so hard on such a diverse package of projects to present to you. So your strong support and endorsement for this moving this process forward will further stimulate and catalyze action across the community, I believe, and will demonstrate that Pima County, the county itself, stands shoulder to shoulder with the individuals and businesses and the organization that are working so hard to invest in the future of this community. So I urge you strongly to advance the bond in 2015. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. That concludes our speakers, but we have several people who do not wish to speak but are here in support of the bond package. Nancy Marge, who is particularly interested in the downtown cultural project. Jim Cook, once the bond put on the ballot in November. And then finally, Jessica Andrews supports the ballot, the bond package in November as well. And with that, we conclude our call to the audience. We have several changes to the agenda and addendum on the consent calendar, and both of these are actually on the consent calendar. Page eight, item 11, Contract Procurement Award. Staff is requesting that this item be removed from the agenda. On page eight, item 12, Contract in Award, Contract Solicitation 168053, so 168053. Staff is requesting that this item be continued to March 17, as a protest has been filed. If there are no objections, we'll sawen them the agenda. Moving on to executive session, there are two executive session of items. I've entertained a motion to move into exec. Motion is a second to move into exec. If there are no objections, we'll convene in exec, and if the sound of the gavel could reconvene in regular session.